Good afternoon. Welcome to the Henry County Board of Education Study Session. In order to ensure productive meeting, attendees at this meeting have agreed to the decorum expected of a meeting of the Board of Education. Disruption to conducting the business of the Board will resort in the Board moving to recess or suspension of the meeting to a later date. I know we have a productive meeting ahead and I'll turn it over to the Chair.
Thank you, Madam Parliamentarian, and good evening. And good evening to those who are watching from home, their cars, or wherever they're watching from. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is now 4:01. Call the study session meeting to order.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, and to our Henry County community, welcome to the study session of the Henry County Board of Education this time for the month of November 2023. Now, as we do begin this meeting, I want to apologize for the inconvenience posed by our temporary disruption to our livestream capabilities that has resulted from our Henry County Schools network outage. Of course, attendance in person is always welcome, so thank you for those of you who could be here today. And we are recording this meeting and it will be posted within 24 hours on our YouTube channel, and that's the Henry County Schools YouTube channel. Now, as you know, we've actually been operating since mid-morning on Thursday with disrupted access to our HCS network, which has resulted in the loss of Internet connection across the entire District of Schools. It's actually been amazing, however, to see the agility of our organization kick right in, and I'm pleased to report that we have successfully operated schools and student services since that time. As always, the Henry County team of professionals, our students, and our parents have responded with amazing adaptability as we keep school operations going, maintain student learning, and maintain the functionality of our core business applications. What we know now is that last week suspicious activity was detected on our network. As you would expect, we take matters of this nature very seriously, and we activated our protocol, which includes immediately engaging with our partners. And those partners include the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, the FBI, Georgia Emergency Management Agency, Henry County PD, Henry County Emergency Management Agency, and cybersecurity partners as a part of our protocol. Together, they are collectively engaged in investigating the suspicious activity. And I can confirm that we have the right people and the right agencies working around the clock right now to investigate the source and the scope of this suspicious activity, which at this time is simply not clear. We also have the right people doing extraordinary work to maintain school operations and continuous student learning without Internet services, and to maintain the continuity of our core business functions, including paying bills, cutting checks, and preparing our payroll. I do, however, know that this is a growing inconvenience in our schools and throughout our district departments, but I have been encouraged and continue to be encouraged by the flexibility of our team of professionals, and I commit to keeping everyone updated as this investigation continues and we work to securely restore our network services. So just like we have continued operations at every one of our 52 campuses throughout this organization, we are prepared to do the same and continue with a productive meeting of the Board of Education this evening. So before I turn this over to the Chair, I have to begin with lots of acknowledgements and celebrations around this organization, and so I'm going to begin with Kindness Weeks. Kindness Week. Now, in my preparation, I had intended to bring with me the poem that my son decided to use for his poetry competition this year, which was titled "Kindness." And although I don't have it in front of me, you would think after having to practice it for eight weeks consecutively, I would have it committed to memory, but I don't. But what I do remember is a seven-year-old voice talking about the significance of kindness every day, and I think about how that is so apparent across this entire community. As the Board is collectively wearing their blue, and I see so much blue in our entire community, we are just reminded we have aspirations to be a community defined by that key attribute of kindness. We actually had an amazing event just a few weeks ago that exemplifies the way we come together as a community, and I'm excited to share with you a brief glimpse into a special moment that was co-hosted by Chair Annette Edwards and Chair Carlotta Harrell, the Board of Education Chair and the Chair of our County Commission, that together showcase what we can do when adults in our community come together to ensure all kids are reading. Let's take a look at that video.
Well, I'm gonna read a book to you today, and it is called "With Lots of Love" by Jeanne Torres Sanchez. She had a new home, but she really missed her other home, the little house where she used to live with Agarla, Tirosa, and her cousin.
So Rosio jumped out of the bed and ran to it. A teacher sat on Rosio's nightstand, and Rosio threw Abuela a good nightie.
We're fully aware of the Board's efforts through their strategic plan to support STEM education, and it starts with students having sound reading skills in the classroom.
Reading Across Henry is a very unique event where the two Chairs, Board of Commissioners Chair Harrell and Board of Education Annette Edwards, come together to read to our students, which is a very important concept in Henry County. It brings the community together with connecting everybody to our students in our district and our community.
So I agree with Chair Edwards. You know, you have to take time out to read to your children. One of the things that I used to do with my daughter is we would have 30 minutes of reading time every day. So take away those electronics, put down the cell phones and the video games, and set aside 30 minutes for your child to be able to read.
Rosio searched for the brightest star and made a wish. In the morning, Rosio woke up to Mama and Papa, her brother, and her sister singing.
I know everybody just wants to pick up a book and get in some kindergarten classrooms and pre-K classrooms, but thank you to Chair Edwards and to Chair Harrell for really what is a symbolic moment of coming together as a community to serve young people. We're also celebrating so many employees this month. We are recognizing that it is an opportunity to honor our school psychologists and the important role that they play as a part of our entire network of serving the wellness and health of young people. It's also Educator Support Professionals Week, and we have grown to celebrate our ESPYS, as we call them, with grand style and recognize that every single individual who serves in our school community outside of the classroom is instrumental in making what happens inside the classroom possible. We're celebrating all of our support professionals this week. And I'm pleased to tell you that this Friday is Substitute Teacher Appreciation Day. And wow, we are so grateful for our substitute teachers this year. After multiple years of struggling to even hit the 50% fill rate, we have been nearing 90% fill rate over the past year, or this current year, and we are thankful and know that that would not be possible without this extraordinary cadre of substitute teachers who are a caring adult in kids' lives. You know, last week was STEM Across America Day, but I think where it happened the best was right here in Henry. Our Board members were able to get into some STEM labs in our elementary schools, and we were really able to see this community-inspired belief that kids should have access to STEM education, starting in kindergarten, straight through into middle school, into high school, and beyond. And it was a great celebration. Between Wednesday and Friday, you couldn't help yourself but find, be inspired by what our educators in the classroom of STEM fields are doing today. And then let me just make sure I mention that we were just so honored to salute those who have served and those who continue to serve, as we recognize Veterans Day across our community. So many special stories of celebration, so many special relationships built and bridged between multiple generations, and I think we were all inspired when we saw our social media and we saw what the news reported, and there really wasn't a school who didn't really just reflect this amazing partnership in our entire community to recognize our veterans. And then finally, there was a milestone moment. I think we really keep it busy in October. It was a milestone moment in October, and this milestone moment has to do with the opening of Birch Creek Elementary School. It's actually been a while since a new elementary school opened in our community, and we are ready for an August 2024 opening of this very new elementary school. The last beam was mounted last week into the facility, and it's a symbol of strength not only for the community but for our entire school district. So let's take a quick look. So excited to celebrate this milestone in the building and opening of Birch Creek Elementary School, our newest school here in Henry County. We're ensuring that every child has access to a high-quality education in every classroom in every corner of our district. so at this time I'll turn it over to Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. We'll move on with the agenda. Item C, informational, item 1A. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, I'd like to invite Ms. McQuary to the podium to provide informational item C-1A, which is a graduation policy revision update. Ms. McQuary.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Davis. Today I am bringing you an update on your proposed revisions to the graduation policy. As a Board, you have made second, post-secondary preparation a key focus of your strategic plan. As displayed on the screen, you have called for our graduates to be ready for college, career, and post-secondary success. In the proposed revisions, you are focused on heightening the value of a Henry County Schools diploma to ensure students are positioned to pursue their post-secondary path of choice. Access to and success in post-secondary education are crucial for building a successful future in today's world. The Great Recession and pandemic both had a disproportionate impact on individuals with a high school diploma or less, which is highlighted in orange, with millions of jobs lost and a slower recovery compared to jobs requiring post-secondary education. As you can see, workers with post-secondary training, the bachelor's degree in blue, or associate's degree in some college, including technical school, in gold, were least impacted and experienced a quicker recovery. This context is essential as you look into, look to increase post-high school opportunities for our students. By heightening graduation requirements with a focus on increasing access to post-secondary opportunities, you prepare our students to earn a viable living wage and compete in an increasingly skilled and educated workforce. Now, let's take a look at how your proposed revisions will ensure students are even more prepared for post-secondary success. Many stakeholders contributed to the refinement of your proposed revisions, including various local school council members, principals, counselors, graduation coaches, teacher advisory groups, and district personnel. They provided invaluable insights and information that shape the policy and information that may inform supporting regulations. Let's now delve into the proposed revisions in more detail. Your revisions include the incorporation of a graduate college and career readiness profile, which identifies the individual attributes and habits of mind that each student is expected to cultivate by the time they graduate, in addition to acquiring a foundational body of knowledge. Your vision for this profile has broadened to incorporate valuable input from our community, including a desire for students to develop a lifelong love for reading and a commitment to continuous learning. Stakeholders also emphasize the importance of problem-solving and critical conflict resolution skills, which are now explicitly addressed within the profile. Moreover, you envision our students actively contributing to the Henry County community through service, and as echoed by several parents, community members, and representatives from our local businesses, students will also be equipped with practical financial skills to apply to real-life situations. You envision Henry graduates emerging as resilient individuals who understand the importance of confronting challenges and persevering through adversity. Crucially, this profile aligns with your mission of empowering all students with exceptional opportunities and access, ultimately leading to success in a global society. It underscores this mission by ensuring that students demonstrate post-secondary readiness skills through the completion of a senior capstone project, which includes participating in mock interviews, completing job applications, crafting resumes, and applying for college, technical schools, military service, and other post-secondary training programs. The ultimate goal is to prepare our students for success in both college and their future careers. Your commitment to preparing students for post-secondary opportunities is evident through the specific graduation requirements outlined here. As displayed on the screen, the core requirements remain consistent. You see the four units of English Language Arts, the four units of Math, the four units of Science, and three units of Social Studies, one unit of the CTAE World Language and Fine Arts, the unit of Health and PE, and the three elective units. In response to the evolving needs of our students and to align with the entrance requirements of Georgia's public colleges and universities, you've made some important revisions, which are highlighted in red. These revisions include the addition of two units of a world language, American Sign Language, or Computer Science. This adjustment ensures that our graduates who complete these required courses are positioned to meet the entrance requirements of Georgia's university system. Another noteworthy addition is the requirement of 80 hours of community service, or 20 per year. We understand that flexibility is important, and a supporting regulation will be developed to address transfer students' concerns, ensuring that they are not burdened with the full 80 hours of service in a shorter timeframe. Additionally, a dedicated task force will be responsible for establishing the specific criteria for the Senior Capstone Project as outlined in a supporting regulation. This initiative underscores our steadfast dedication to delivering a comprehensive and well-rounded education that equips students for their future pursuits. In the bottom right-hand corner, you will note the 24 units highlighted in red, as Henry's graduation requirements will exceed the 23 units mandated by the State Board of Education. This distinction reflects your commitment to go in above and beyond to ensure our students are exceptionally prepared for their post-secondary journeys. Your policy revisions will be made available for public review and presented to you for official adoption in December. If adopted, a working team will convene to comprehensively outline supporting regulations. This will provide the necessary clarity for our families, leaders, and schools to understand the implications of the graduation policy for students who will commence their high school journey next August, August of 2024. Additionally, we will implement a robust communication plan and hold meetings with secondary principals, graduation coaches, and counselors to ensure alignment and understanding. Your leadership and vision in this endeavor will enhance our students' preparation for their post-secondary path of choice. Dr. Davis, that is all I have prepared, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. McQuary. Madam Chair, that concludes we've prepared but remain available for the discussion.
Thank you very much, Mrs. McQuary. Are there any questions for Mrs. McQuary? Okay, Ms. Cobb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for this, Ms. McQuary. You know, I love this. I've been so excited about this work, and I'm just so proud that we're taking this step as a Board and a school system to really set our students up for success and open the options that our students will have when they graduate from one of our high schools. I love that we're adding the two world languages, or Computer Science, or American Sign Language. I love the capstone idea. I think that's wonderful. It's gonna be such a great experience for our students, and just knowing that our diploma will mean more in the future is just really the direction that I love to see us go in. So just want to thank you and your team for all of your hard work. Thank you for taking this out into the schools to get feedback, because it is important that we are capturing the voices of our parents and stakeholders. So thank you for your hard work in this.
Thank you, Mrs. Cobb. Mrs. Pope?
Yes, thank you so much, and I echo Mrs. Cobb in just thanking you for all of your hard work around this. I am beyond excited about what this is gonna mean for our students in the future, and as our growth continues in our county, I'm just excited that people will come here for this reason also. I want our diploma to be something that students are proud of and families are proud of, and universities and employers and everywhere that our students go are excited to know that they're getting a Henry County graduate. And, you know, it's our job to create the conditions for students to be successful, and we do that through policy. So I cannot wait to see this policy just come to life through a regulation that's gonna totally transform the experience of students. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Pope. Dr. Nutt?
This is awesome. Are we not adding foreign language next year or soon?
So in our elementary, in our strategic plan, it calls for our elementary schools to add a world language over the next three years, and then, of course, that will materialize into middle and high beyond that. But this graduation requirement would be going from one year of world language to two credits of world language.
Right. That's great, because that's gonna build on what they know. Show what you know. So when you graduate as a wildcat, oh, did I say wildcat? Sorry. Or warhawk, your diploma's gonna mean something. And it's not that you're handed a piece of paper. This is something you could be very proud of, and thank you for your hard work, and I'm really excited about the addition. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nutt. Board Member McKenzie?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. McQuary, for this presentation. If we don't mind, can we go back to the slide that says "proposed revisions," if we don't mind, please? So I asked this question during our agenda review. For the public that may be looking for anyone, a lot of these things, while they are great, has a lot of subjectivity into it. So the question I asked then that I ask now is, how do we, or what do we need to do, or what kind of human capital or financial capital or resources do we need to put in place to foster a lifelong love for reading and a commitment to continuous learning or to apply critical thinking skills? How do we, as either a Board or as a district, how do we do these things for our scholars in today's society? How do we ensure that these things happen?
So just as we spoke in agenda review, you know that as a part of your conversations and whole Board training, this was really about capturing the Board's vision for the dispositions and what we wanted the Henry County graduate to embody when they left, when they graduated from Henry County Schools. And so as I said, as a part of the report, the next step would really be around fleshing that out as a part of regulation and a working team that will begin to make meaning and ensure this takes shape, so that we're very clear with our teams as to what this looks like, and the experiences that our students need to have in order to ensure they're on the path to realizing this when they graduate, to emerge ready for post-secondary opportunities.
And always I ask those questions again because a lot of times, not saying that we do it, but, you know, I've seen in other organizations to where we, to where they put things in place, but then they don't undergird it, they don't support it, or, you know, they don't lay the foundation to make sure that it happens and that it occurs. And so therefore, I think one of the good things that we do here is that we make sure it happens. However, again, you know, when it talks about confronting challenges and recognizing the need to persevere through adversity and cultivate effective conflict resolution skills, that can be a myriad of things. It can look different from this scholar to that scholar, it can look different from this teacher to that teacher. So I hope that as we begin to move forward and bring in this full circle, that we understand that it is going to be multifaceted, it's gonna look different for everybody, but that we also get the input of our scholars as well, because this directly impacts them and what they do and what we would like to see in them as they get ready to graduate. So thank you and your team for this.
Thank you, Board Member McKenzie. Dr. Davis, would you like to chime in on that question?
I didn't, I think Tamarian hit that question perfectly. I just wanted to, you know, I love to reflect on where we've been and really, the voice of our community through the development of the Community Inspired Strategic Plan really talked about not getting to the stage of graduation, but the options when you walk off the stage in graduation. And so much of our strategic plan was really fostering this opportunities, access, and outcomes, including post-graduation outcomes. So I think setting some clear goals around how we provide that public guarantee, that it's not just to the stage, it's beyond the stage, is really powerful, but you then couple it with this Board of Education that I just have to restate, while they are finalists for Governance Team of the Year, it is because they actually author and architect the work of policy to create conditions that change the experience for young people in a community. And so while when we look at some of the tweaks to a graduation policy and we see some credits shift a little bit, this was after the Board studied tons of policies from around the country, to really look at how do Boards of Education shape the experiences before the stage so that the options are really plentiful beyond the stage. And so this is, this is, policy work is so important, but too few Boards really dedicate what has now been 18 months of time to study, to find commonalities amongst your own perspectives, and to really connect that with our community's ambition for the options kids have. So I think this is an exciting body of work. I just wanted to reflect on why this even came into existence, and to really commend the Board for their dedication to create the conditions for every kid in every classroom across our community and not leaving it to chance, as this policy reflects.
Thank you very much. Moving on down the agenda, informational item C-2A. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, I'd like to invite Ms. Cox to the podium to provide informational item C-2A, which is our Birch Creek Elementary Attendance Zones. Ms. Cox?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Madam Superintendent. Tonight, I am pleased to share with you a new attendance zone proposal related to the opening of Birch Creek Elementary School. This Board of Education has established a clear vision and mission that prioritizes a high-quality, world-class education with exceptional opportunities and access for every student. As we prepare to open Birch Creek Elementary School, it is imperative that the community-inspired strategic actions identified by this Board serve as a compass for continuing to accelerate learning experiences for all students, to ensure community and stakeholder engagement, and to advance a high-performing operational culture. The opening of Birch Creek Elementary School has been a priority of this Board since October of 2020, when you reviewed an external evaluation of usage of classroom space and projected growth across the district. The results of this study showed that the western area of the Wesley Lakes Attendance Zone would be reaching capacity by 2025. Consequently, this Board was able to use the data from the Classroom Utilization Study to unanimously approve a resolution in January 2021 that gave your support to the development of a new elementary school on Willow Lane, in addition to several other growth projects. 68% of Henry County voters then approved funding for those projects through the Education Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax 6 referendum, referred to as E-SPOS 6, in March of 2021. Birch Creek Elementary School was one of those growth projects, and the Board approved the bid for construction in August of 2022. Monthly updates on construction have been provided to this Board, with the topping-out ceremony occurring recently on October 31st. Substantial completion is expected in May of 2024, with doors opening to students in August of 2024. As we prepare to open a new school, new attendance zones must be established. The Board, this Board has set- The board, this board has set expectations for developing school attendance zones by establishing policy JBCCA, Student Assignment to Schools. And this policy states that student assignment to schools will enhance the instructional program, maximize the use of district and school resources, and provide for an efficient bus transportation system. While this policy emphasizes that students will be assigned to schools based on the attendance zones approved by the Henry County Board of Education, it also prioritizes the best interest of students and the operations of the school district in determining these zones. Supporting this policy is Administrative Regulation JBCCAR II, Student Assignment to Schools, School Attendance Zones, which provides guidance on administrative procedures related to establishing school attendance zones. This regulation identifies primary and secondary criteria that must be considered when determining school attendance zones. The primary criteria include geographic proximity, which is defined by distance from the student's home address and school location; school capacity, where we consider the number of students a school is built to serve; and also projected enrollment, which is defined by the number of students projected to enroll in the future. The secondary criteria include feeder patterns, which is defined by the middle and high school feeder patterns associated with an elementary school; traffic patterns, where we consider traffic needs; previous rezoning, so that we do not rezone the same students multiple times within a short period of time; and special programs, where we balance special programs across schools when possible. Thanks to clear expectations set by this board and policy JBCCA, and further defined in the accompanying regulation, we are able to provide consistency and predictability to our approach in opening a new school. It is now our responsibility to bring to fruition the board's expectations for school attendance zones by presenting a proposal for Birch Creek Elementary School. It is with this board's commitment to improving access, opportunities, and outcomes across all Henry County schools that an attendance zone proposal was established. We remain committed to ensuring that every student will have access to high-quality instructional programs and resources that are led by highly effective teachers and leaders, with supportive, safe, and secure learning environments that provide high-quality opportunities to participate in desired enrichment activities and allow for their ability to benefit from support services when needed. We remain committed to ensuring that every family will have access to timely information that prioritizes engagement with the school community, allowing them to contribute to a welcoming school culture and climate where positive collaborations occur between administrators, staff, families, and students. And we remain committed to ensuring that every staff member will have clarity regarding employment through clear and consistent processes and guidelines, with high-quality resources and professional development that build confidence in the provision of instruction and personal well-being. Conversations with principals at Bethlehem, Oakland, and Wesley Lakes Elementary Schools regarding the attendance zone proposal for Birch Creek began the week of September 18th. Additional principal conversations have been ongoing since that time, to include cluster, middle, and high school principals and assistant superintendents who support these schools. We shared preliminary information regarding the opening of Birch Creek Elementary with the McDonough City Council on October 16th, which was then followed by the first school council meeting and faculty meetings at Bethlehem, Oakland, and Wesley Lakes. Cluster community conversations have occurred for the Eagles Landing, McDonough, and Luella clusters, and participants at those sessions were provided a brief overview of the opening of Birch Creek. Information sessions and the first of two community forums were held the week of October 30th at Bethlehem, Oakland, and Wesley Lakes Elementary Schools, and virtual options were provided on November 9th. With a total of 27 opportunities, parents and community members were invited to learn more about the school attendance zone determination process, as well as to provide feedback on the topics shared with them during the information session. Tonight, we are sharing detailed information related to the attendance zone proposal as an informational item. This is a recent aerial view of the construction underway at 850 Willow Lane, McDonough, Georgia, which will open as Birch Creek Elementary School in August of 2024. Henry County School serves as home to 28 elementary schools, 11 middle schools, 10 high schools, and five specialty schools and programs. Of the 28 elementary schools across the district, only three will be impacted by the Birch Creek Attendance Zone. Before I share detailed information about the attendance zone proposal, I am sharing this map of Henry County. As you can see by the yellow circle in the middle of this map, the geographic area impacted by the Birch Creek Attendance Zone proposal represents a small section of the county where Bethlehem, Oakland, and Wesley Lakes are centrally located. The attendance zone proposal for Birch Creek will provide a zoomed-in view of this area highlighted in yellow. As mentioned previously, Board Regulation JBCCAR II, which provides procedures for determining school attendance zones, identifies primary and secondary criteria to consider as part of the process. School capacity and projected enrollment are included in the primary criteria, so it is imperative that we understand the current capacity needs at the impacted schools, as well as how the opening of Birch Creek will affect future enrollment. This table provides important data regarding the current capacity at Bethlehem, Oakland, and Wesley Lakes, as seen by the column outlined in yellow. This calculation is determined by comparing the school's instructional capacity with the projected enrollment for the current 2023-2024 school year. Oakland, which first opened in 1991, is at 124% capacity, with nine trailers serving more than 300 students. Wesley Lakes opened in 1993 and is at 102% capacity, with four trailers serving approximately 60 students. Operating at 57% capacity with no need for trailers is Bethlehem Elementary School, which opened in 2007. This table also provides important data regarding projected capacity at the three impacted elementary schools, as well as Birch Creek Elementary School, as seen by the column outlined in orange. This calculation is determined by comparing the school's instructional capacity with projected enrollment for the 2024-2025 school year. Based on projections, new attendance zones should allow all four schools, Birch Creek, Oakland, Wesley Lakes, and Bethlehem, to operate between 60 and 70% capacity, achieving a more responsible balance for student enrollment while also allowing room for continued growth that is anticipated based on new residential developments. Additional outcomes include keeping all students in their existing middle and high school feeder patterns, and not splitting existing neighborhoods and subdivisions into multiple elementary schools. The implementation of new attendance zones will result in eliminating the need for trailers and placing students back into classrooms, easing transportation logistics, improving learning opportunities, and balancing key resources that allow all of our students to thrive academically. This visual represents the proposed attendance zones related to the opening of Birch Creek. This proposal was developed with board policy serving as a compass to the expected outcome, and the primary and secondary criteria identified in the accompanying regulation serving as the roadmap to successfully realizing that outcome. Geographic proximity, school capacity, and projected enrollment served as primary markers in developing this proposal, with feeder patterns, traffic patterns, previous rezoning, and special programming all informing the final proposal. The blue area is the proposed Wesley Lakes Attendance Zone. The pink area is the proposed Birch Creek Attendance Zone. And the yellow area is the provo, proposed Oakland Attendance Zone. Bethlehem's Attendance Zone is reflected in the green area. The proposal identifies students currently attending Wesley Lakes and Oakland, who are zoned for Eagles Landing Middle and High School, to attend Birch Creek Elementary beginning August 2024, with the impacted students continuing in the Eagles Landing Middle and High School feeder pattern. Additionally, this proposal includes an area in the southeastern section of the current Oakland Attendance Zone to attend Bethlehem Elementary School beginning August 2024, with the impacted students continuing in the Luella Middle and High School feeder pattern. This proposal also allows for all existing neighborhoods to be zoned for the same elementary school to provide for consistent attendance zones for our students, families, and the community. Phase two of events related to the opening of Birch Creek Elementary School will begin tomorrow, as we meet with school faculties and school councils for the second time. Later this week, we will hold the second community forum opportunity, where families and community members can provide comment on the proposed attendance zones. The Board of Education is scheduled to take action on the proposed attendance zones on December 11th. Once approved, the official notice to families will begin later that same week. Meet and greets with principals and identified staff members at Bethlehem Elementary and Birch Creek Elementary will begin spring 2024. This board's commitment to providing high-quality instructional opportunities for every student, setting the conditions for an advanced operational culture that contributes to effective teachers and leaders, and providing engagement opportunities to benefit families, such as the examples pictured here of the Birch Creek Information Sessions and Community Forums, have been instrumental in defining desired outcomes and processes for our students, families, and staff members as we prepare for a successful opening of Birch Creek Elementary School. The attendance zone proposal presented this evening aligns with the expectations this board has identified in policy JBCCA, and also fulfills your vision of ensuring a high-quality, world-class education for every student. Madam Superintendent, this concludes the information I have prepared for the board and turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Madam Chair, that concludes what we have prepared but remain available for the discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Cox. Does any board member, okay, Dr. Nutt?
Thank you so much. Y'all have really worked hard. How many sessions did you say y'all have done so far?
Uh, for the information sessions and community forums, we actually held 27 different opportunities.
That is just unbelievable. Um, being a pro at rezoning and redistricting, I don't remember us ever doing this much this early in the game, and I applaud y'all for working so hard. And you've looked at not splitting the community. That was something that, um, I don't think was in, um, was really thought about. And I remember one community was rezoned three or four times within a year, two years. I realize we were experiencing extreme growth, but that was very hard to see your child go into one school this year and another school next year. So thank you for keeping that in mind as y'all are developing these, um, zones. One other note, I cannot believe Oakland, um, Oakland Elementary has been here since 1991. That's just, that's just amazing, uh, to me. That's just amazing. But thank you again for everything y'all have done. That's just, I'm very, I'm very ecstatic knowing that y'all have done this much, and you're putting this out for the people to know this much in advance. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nutt. Mrs. Cobb?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just really wanted to say thank you. I feel like I've been so informed, and you guys have been so thorough, and just, that is amazing. I agree with Dr. Nutt that you all have conducted that many, um, sessions for community members and parents to attend. I just think it's wonderful. So I just really wanted to say thank you, and the building is beautiful. Thank you to Josh Malcolm and everyone involved in the construction of the building. It was great to be out there at the topping-out ceremony to see, um, just the construction underway, and I'm very excited about this project, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cobb. Mrs. Pope?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and I also just want to thank you and your team for all the hard work in keeping our community informed and as a part of this conversation. Um, and I really just want to thank our community for supporting ESBLAS so that this is possible. Um, that chart, the student capacity chart, is really telling, and, um, again, I know I said this in the last agenda item, but given the projected growth in our community, I'm really grateful for this opportunity to be able to provide, um, excellent opportunities and access to those opportunities for all of our students. So this is a, a great, um, celebration, and the topping-out ceremony was amazing. The building does look beautiful. Driving up that hill and seeing it is just phenomenal. So thank you, Josh, um, and thank you for all the work that has gone into this, and I'm, I'm excited for the students that will be a part of this.
Thank you, Mrs. Pope, and I would just like to say I had the opportunity to visit the three schools, uh, all in one day. It was a full day, but enjoyed it, and, um, the few parents that I did talk to, they were so excited about the new school, and, um, and even the one thing that, the most important thing that they were excited about was the kids were coming out of the trailers. You know, they were all talking about that because of the weather, inclement weather and all. But overall, I, we got some good comments from the parents, and, um, I think they're gonna be really excited when the, uh, attendance zones are presented to them, because they were just, they were just excited about the kids coming out of the trailers and being in the main building. So thank you all for all of your work. Are there any questions? Any more questions? Okay, Dr. Davis, would you like to chime in?
I mean, I think the only thing I'll add is that, um, you can see that the resolution and the exhibit with the attendance zones will be placed for a public review, and as we, um, near our December meeting, for the board to take action on the recommendation provided. Um, and so, that, I think that's it.
Thank you. See informational item two B. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I'd like to invite Ms. McCreary to the podium to provide informational item C to B, which is our first local accountability priority student outcomes report. Ms. McCreary?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Madam Superintendent. Today, I am bringing a local accountability update. As a board, you establish a core belief that each student can learn at or above grade level and will have an equal opportunity to do so. And you go further than belief by building expectations within your core policies, namely IAB, that calls for the district to advance opportunities, access, and outcomes for every student and student group in Henry County schools. Additionally, your policy IB builds upon this belief in all children by cascading a culture of performance across all district divisions, within each school, and in every classroom. Your governance and the insights gleaned from the Henry County community shaped your strategic plan and priority student outcomes, making the aspirations and the dreams of our community, community visible and actionable for the organization. This year's theme, Winning for Kids, marks a significant turning point for Henry County schools. It symbolizes our determination to further unite our efforts, ensure an alignment between the district and school, district and school personnel, to collaboratively focus our lens on your established goals. As mandated by your policy IB, you've set clear expectations for the superintendent to align the organization's, um, performance with your core beliefs, commitments, student learning goals, and strategic plan. On the screen before you, within the goal box, you can observe how your governance, governance in this boardroom serves as the foundation for superintendent evaluation, which in turn extends to organizational and individually, individual accountability across our district. Henry's organizational accountability, which encompasses the required state accountability, such as the College and Career Readiness Index, or CCRPI, local accountability measures that include priority student outcomes, strategic plan initiative completion, and public accountability. You expect us to be transparent about the priority outcomes outlined in your strategic plan. This entails publishing annual and quarterly strategic plan reports. This entails publishing annual and quarterly strategic plan reports, as well as district and school profiles to keep the community informed about our progress. Today's report will specifically highlight our progress with local accountability measures, shedding light on how we're faring with your priority student outcomes. As discussed in the preceding slide, you have tasked the superintendent with the responsibility of aligning the organization's efforts with your objectives for student learning. As you can see on the screen, there are key performance indicators that guide the actions of the superintendent's executive cabinet, district, as well as school leadership. These indicators, along with the goals set by each school, play a pivotal role in shaping district operational management plans and continuous school improvement plans. This concerted effort ensures that the emphasis on your core beliefs, commitments, and student learning goals is not only evident in this boardroom, but also permeates throughout the organization and schools and classrooms. Now, let's take a look at our progress. Priority Student Outcome Number One aims to improve literacy skills for all students in every grade. Your PSO focuses on two main areas of reading to, to measure this improvement. Reading growth from grade to grade measures how much students are getting better at reading from one year to the next. We use the MAP assessment in the spring to measure if students are meeting or exceeding their expected growth. We'll compare this from one spring to the next. When students start at school this year, they completed the MAP assessment, and we'll take the assessment again soon and in the spring to gauge growth and any extra supports that may be needed. As you know, the next metric is about how well students are reading at or above their grade level. We check if students are meeting or exceeding the Lexile score captured on the MAP assessment. As you can see displayed on the screen and as shared in my prior milestone's report, although we maintained or increased performance in grades four, five, seven, and eight, we still have significant work to do to reach your goal of 69% of students reading on grade level by 2026, as outlined in your strategic plan. As Mary Elizabeth reminds us often, we know that 95% of students are capable, are cognitively capable of reading on grade level, and we have the responsibility of increasing reading proficiency for every student and student group in our schools. Priority Student Outcome Number One also includes access to world language programs. And at the end of the 22-23 school year, we realized the one percentage point gain in this essential metric that opens so many doors to many opportunities for our students. The schools displayed on the screen demonstrated progress on your Priority Student Outcome Number One during the 22-23 school year. Kudos to each of these schools and teams for increasing opportunities, access, and outcomes in reading and access to world languages. This year, our organization is dedicated to boosting reading achievement, particularly in grades three, five, and eight. We're using a combination of focus walks, common formative assessments, and site visits to track and bolster student performance in these critical areas. Our data from focus walks reveals a 12.5% increase in observed tasks at the level of the standard since the start of the school year and growing implementation of the reading strategies introduced during our professional learning sessions. While we've seen improvements in certain areas through our common formative assessments, like understanding the main idea of texts and comparing their structures, it's evident that we need to further enhance student mastery and standards that involve close reading. We're actively using insights from these assessments to shape ongoing professional development. For instance, in our recent Professional Development Day, teachers gained additional reading strategies for their toolkits. The positive reception was clear, with many educators noting their ability, ability to immediately implement the strategies they learned during that professional development. With our persistent focus on these key performance areas, we're optimistic that this year will mark a significant turning point in our reading KPIs. In world languages, based on world, based on enrollment data pulled during the first semester, we have over 10,000 students participating in a world language course at this time. Additionally, we've noted increases in world language participation in additional areas. Notably, a 21.5 percentage point increase in elementary students accessing world languages, 6/10 of a percentage point increase in high school student enrollment this fall. Student group indications include just shy of a percentage point increase in our Hispanic students enrolled in middle school and high school, as well as a 1.7 percentage point increase in African-American and Black students enrolled in, enrolled in world languages. These are first semester indications, and this PSO will also be measured by second semester enrollments. As with each PSO, we know we have more work to do, but we are moving in the right direction to increase opportunities, access, and outcomes for all students. Priority Student Outcome Number Two is all about advancing opportunities, access, and outcomes for every group and readiness to learn at every grade. Kindergarten readiness means having the essential skills that help kids succeed when they start school. These skills include being emotionally prepared, having good control of small and big movements, being able to talk and understand what others say, knowing how to get along with others, and having basic skills in reading and math. We use the G-Kids Readiness Assessment to determine kindergarten readiness. If they show they have the right skills in at least two out of the three areas, school success skills, language arts, and math, they're considered ready. As you can see displayed on the screen, we're experiencing a slight decrease in readiness when compared to 21, 22, to the 21, 22 school year. For the Gross Motor Skills metric during the 22-23 school year, a local performance rubric, the Henry Ready Gross Motor Check, was implemented to measure the gross motor readiness of our kindergarten students. Assessing these skills early on allows educators and parents to identify any potential developmental concerns and provide support to ensure students' overall well-being and successful participation in physical activities. You will note the 55% baseline performance for 22-23, with the goal of 58% for 2026. Community and student voice were essential in your selection of participation in advanced coursework as a priority student outcome. And your investment in the College and Career Readiness Analysis shed light on varying access to advanced coursework across schools. You will note a 6 percentage point increase over school year 22 performance from 21% to 27% in school year 2023. That's a solid increase in the opportunities we're giving our students, and we believe that access to these courses puts our students on a path to future success. The schools displayed on the screen demonstrated progress on your Priority Student Outcome Number Two during the 22-23 school year. Kudos to these schools and teams for increasing opportunities, access, and outcomes in kindergarten readiness, gross motor, motor skills, and advanced coursework enrollment. As it relates to the 23-24 school year indications, we are optimistic about kindergarten readiness. This summer, as outlined in your strategic plan, we implemented the inaugural Early Kindergarten Program to give students a jumpstart on skills with a focus on math, reading, and healthy movement. As measured by pre and post tests, students in the Early Kindergarten Program realized a 6 percentage point increase in readiness, placing them on a path to more learning during the school year. We're thrilled that each of our elementary schools implemented this four-week program to ensure, to ensure our students are on a path to success. On this year's Gross Motor Check, I am happy to report that early data indicates an increase in 21 elementary schools, with these schools already meeting or exceeding the newly established district target of 58%. Additionally, district preliminary performance overall increased over 20 percentage points from 55% in school year 23 to 75% this school year. Kudos to our diligent elementary school physical education teachers for laying the foundation for a healthy and active lifestyle in school and beyond. In your core beliefs and policies, your focus on improving opportunities, access, and outcomes for every student and student group in Henry County schools is evident. And I'm delighted to share our progress in this area as well, as measured by current enrollments. While success on this measure will be evident by improving the percentage of students who take advanced courses for at least half of a school year, current enrollments are a good way to monitor our progress. We're off to a strong start with over 11,000 students participating in advanced coursework, yielding a preliminary increase of over fall 22 by 2.5 percentage points. We've experienced growth at every level in elementary, with the first semester enrollment increase of 12.7 percentage points, middle school 2.7 percentage points, and high school 3.7 percentage points. We've also observed an overall increase in preliminary enrollment in student groups, including a 10th of a percentage point with our English learners, 1.9 percentage point increase in gifted student enrollment, 2.9 increase in African-American student enrollment, 3.1 for our Asian students, 2.2 for our Hispanic students, 3.5 for our multiracial students, and 2.7 percentage point increase for our white students enrolled in advanced coursework. These overall student group highlights do not fully capture the special story occurring in our elementary schools. With the addition of third-grade advanced math and additional on-ramps to advanced coursework, elementary enrollment has increased over 100% from 948 students enrolled last fall to 2,159 elementary students now enrolled. This includes a 37 percentage point increase in gifted enrollment, gifted student enrollment, 6 percentage point increase with our English learners, 2 percentage point increase in students with disabilities. Additional student group highlights includes an 11 percentage point increase for our African-American students enrolled in elementary advanced coursework, 13 percentage points for our Hispanic students, 16 percentage point increases for our white students, and a 19 percentage point increase for students identified as multiracial. Again, we recognize that we have work to do. However, we're proud that fall data indicates positive momentum. Priority Student Outcome Three is all about ensuring our students are ready for college, career, and life. Your ambitious post-secondary readiness PSOs demonstrate your belief in student capability and your public commitment to all kids in Henry, meaning all kids. On this PSO, you will note a slight decrease of 1 percentage point in the number of graduates who qualify for the Zell Miller Scholarship. While we did have that slight decrease, we realized a 12 percentage point increase in the ELA College Readiness Measure, as defined by the reading benchmark set by the SAT or ACT. We also saw an increase in the Math College Readiness Indicator with a 4 percentage point increase. And as you can see displayed on the, on the screen, we've increased in PSAT 8, 9, with a 6 percentage point increase in participation, and a 1 percentage point increase in performance, and a 35% increase in PSAT 10 participation. However, there was a 3 percentage point decrease in performance, a slight decline considering the significant increase in access to this opportunity. Our students recently completed the PSAT in October, and we look forward to receiving the official results any day now. Because of your vision, more students are taking the PSAT, and we're excited to see how they performed on the October administration. The schools displayed on the screen demonstrated progress on your Priority Student Outcome Number Three during the 22-23 school year. Kudos to these schools and teams for increasing opportunities, access, and outcomes in graduates qualifying for the Zell Miller Scholarship, ELA College Readiness, as well as Math College Readiness, and increased PSAT participation and performance. Our internal calculations indicate a preliminary increase in PSAT 8, 9, and 10 participation. However, we will receive the official results this week and look forward to analyzing our performance. While SAT is not a PSO measure, it's a measure of student readiness for college. So let's take a look at the class of 2023's performance. There was a slight decrease in SAT performance compared to the class of 22, a trend also observed at the national and state levels. Despite this trend, the Henry class of 2023 outperformed their public school peers nationwide in extended reading and writing, exceeding the national mean by one point. The schools displayed on the screen experienced success in the areas that are highlighted. Check out Union Grove and Ola, outperforming the national public school mean, and Eagles Landing and McDonough High Schools' increasing performance on the extended reading and writing, as well as the math components. And with your focus on every student and student group, our Black or African-American students in the class of 2023, who represented 61% of the 2023 SAT test takers, outperform other African-American students in both the state and the nation on all sections of the SAT. With Priority Student Outcome Number Three focused on college, career, and life readiness, let's take a look at graduation rates, a critical measure of the number of graduates emerging from our schools and entering the college and career options. The district's overall, overall four-year graduation rate, shaded in gray in the first table, increased by just shy of a percentage point in 2023. The high schools displayed in the first table improved their 2023 graduation rates over 2022 performance. You will also note Henry County Schools' graduation rate exceeds the state, including the economically disadvantaged and Students with Disabilities student groups displayed in the second table. And for the one-year improvement for the state, that should also say 3/10 of a percentage point improvement compared to Henry's 9/10 upper percentage point. As we continue our focus of advancing opportunities, access, and outcomes for every student and student group and begin our preparations for the 24-25 academic year, we will continue to ensure organizational alignment to ensure your core beliefs, commitments, and goals for student learning and strategic plan as outlined in your policy IB. We know that there is more work to do, but remain focused on our work of advancing opportunities, access, and outcomes for every student and student group in Henry County schools. Dr. Davis, that is all I have prepared, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. McCrary. Madam Chair, before I turn it back over to you, I just, I just have to take a moment and acknowledge that this is actually a rather special report that's just been provided to the board. It's really been a quest of this board to create clarity in our organization and confidence of our community. And although there are so many data points that any professional in the room recognizes we're just not quite pleased with, or we're just not quite satisfied, we know that there are some monumental milestones of progress that were nuggets throughout that report. We've talked about how this organization emerged from COVID, not with chaos, but with clarity. And I really have to give this Board of Education credit for that clarity because in the late months of 2019 and early months of 2020, we asked 8,000 people, what does success look like in schools? And they gave us about 1,000 different answers to what that success looked like. And our board, through the months and arduous weeks and, and what became years of COVID, they never stopped nurturing what our community defined as success and went through the process to establish priority student outcomes and create goals for those outcomes, and those goals have now been shared with schools. Now, it was really in 2021 that I shared what it meant to be an organization that took accountability for every kid's learning outcomes. And I just want to repeat that statement as I think it sets the tone for what our board has established and now we see happening to motivate great results for young people. So we talked about accountability just means that goals are clear. So thank you to this Board of Education, who has made the goals clear. Accountability does not mean changing people when goals are not met. It means people changing their practice when goals are not met. Accountability is about relentlessly assessing the effectiveness of our practice and humbly adjusting a practice that we either inherited or designed ourselves when results for students are just not evident. Accountability is about celebrating wins together and adjusting when we don't meet our shared goals. Accountability is about being clear about our pursuit, clear about our communities' determined success for kids, and clear about our shared responsibility on behalf of the young people in Henry County. Accountability builds teams that share a mission and champions that celebrate every team member doing just their part. The commitment to kids learning more on our watch than they could anywhere else has never been more prominently center stage for this board. And I do believe it is just the beginning of what results are possible. So Madam Chair, that does conclude the report we've prepared, and we remain available for the discussion.
Okay, Mrs. Cobb, comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not quite sure how I follow that. That was great. Thank you, Dr. Davis. I really just wanted to say thank you, Ms. McCrary. Like, this report was really amazing. Just taking a snapshot of where we are and where we're going. And I'm very optimistic about the future of Henry County schools. And just want to say a special thank you to all of our classroom teachers and our building leaders, because none of this would be possible without them. And so I just appreciate this update to the board and look forward to the success of the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cobb. Any more comments, questions?
Yes, thank you both so much for that report. And the, the piece about accountability is just so important. And I'm so grateful to be a part of an organization who believes in accountability and who believes in celebrating every single win because every one of those numbers is a student. And we have to celebrate that. So I am very, very optimistic about where we're going. I'm so grateful for the teams that are in place so that when we see- I'm so grateful for the teams that are in place, so that when we see results that we are not super thrilled with, we have an immediate action plan to ensure that more students see success than ever before. So I'm really, really grateful for everyone who is working so hard, day in and day out, to ensure that every student has access to incredible opportunities that will absolutely lead to improved outcomes. So thank you so much for this report.
Thank you, Mrs. Pope. Board Member McKenzie?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Ms. McCrory, thank you, that was a lot of data. I mean, in my mind, I was trying to figure out how to, it was a lot, so I'll say that, and I'm a person who likes numbers, and that was still a lot even for me. But what I will say is, is that when we talk about accountability, the superintendent stated it eloquently, as well as our vice chair, about recognizing our good and then also looking at the things that are not so lovely. And I think that we do a good job in doing that here in Henry County. One of the things that I've always been concerned about, and I've stated, if we were to, if I can go back and find it, was about participation in advanced coursework, about how we've gone from twenty-one percent to twenty-seven percent in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three. But I've always been concerned about the fact that it's good to get more participants in advanced coursework, but their success is what's paramount to me. It's one thing to get a student to go into AP class or go to, you know, that advanced coursework class, but then it's another thing for that student to excel in that class and to pass that class and to comprehend what's being taught inside of that classroom. So that's one of the things that, to me, is of interest, is it's okay for us to have six hundred additional students in AP classes, but if we have six hundred, I'm just throwing out a number, but if we have six hundred students in those classes, but then half of them don't meet the benchmark, that's a concern for me, to make sure that, you know, while they're in there, we're giving them what they need so therefore they can be successful. Because what I don't want is for us to subliminally make this a numbers game, and then we forget the real reason why we're doing what we're doing. That's one thing that I'm concerned about, about that. And the other thing is, is that we talk a lot about, and there are a lot of accountability matrices, you have them here, you have them at the state, you have them nationally, you have them all over, and we talk about that a lot. And so I was actually not confronted, but I was asked a question about how does our local accountability matrix or assessments, how do they actually relate to, or how do they, whatever word you want to find, coincide, or, you know, how do they actually relate to what the state sets for, that we should be doing? How is what we're doing aligned to what the state is saying we should be doing when it comes down to data accountability?
So the board designed the Priority Student Outcomes in response to what the community has said, that the experiences we wanted every student in Henry County Schools to have, and what success looks like for Henry County students. What I will say is there is significant overlap between the state accountability, there is some overlap between the state accountability metrics, as well as the local accountability metrics. So one of them being in the College and Career Index being content mastery, how our students are performing as it relates to the standards, and how, whether or not they are mastering those standards as measured by the Georgia Milestones. We're also, and as a part of that, Lexile Score is captured to ensure, to see if students are reading on grade level. Reading on grade level is also a component of your local accountability metrics as well. In addition to that, making sure that our students are prepared for opportunities post-high school are some components that are also included in the College and Career Readiness Index. What this board has done is taken it above and beyond what the state has called for in the CCRPI, so that we can make the hopes and dreams of our community actionable and visible for our community, so that we are clear on the goals within the organization. So we are doing both here in Henry County Schools, ensuring that we're prioritizing those state accountability metrics and getting better at that as well as our local accountability metrics.
And lastly, I just want to say again, outstanding compilation of data here, one of the things that is not a concern, because I know that data goes up and down, you know, one year you're up, next year you're down. But one of the things that I know that we had an expressed interest about was the Zell Miller Scholarship. And again, I know it's one percentage point, it's minute, but it's my hope and prayer that we can find a way to get more of our students to get the scholarships that they need, no matter if it's a full ride or whatever, so therefore they do not have to have that financial burden when they actually go to college. And I know that's one of the things your team is looking forward to, so I hope that number increases this year. So thank you and your team for what they're doing.
Thank you, Mr. McKenzie. And I would just like to say, I'm excited from where we've come from to where we are now and where we're headed. So thank you all so much for all the work that you do. We've got to move on. Thank you so much. Any more questions? No? Thank you so much. All right, moving down the agenda, item informational C three A. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I'd like to invite Mr. Malcolm to the podium to provide informational item C three A. This is the October Construction and East Splatte Report. Mr. Malcolm?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Davis. The first item I have for you all tonight is the October Construction and East Splatte Report. Start with Birch Creek that we've heard a little bit about already tonight. And as you can see, we're getting into some of the finishing activities outside, and we continue to work on the building. So curb and gutter installation, main entrance has been completed along with placement of the GAB. Asphalt binder has gone from Willow Lane all the way up to the school now, so that's really good as we get into the muddy season with the weather changing. Site water activities have been completed out there now. Storm drainage is about eighty percent, so we're tracking really well there. CMU activities have been completed for the entire site. That's a really big milestone for us out there as we start to clean up the exterior of the site. Brick masonry activities continue in sectors one, two, and three. Structural steel plate placement is nearing completion for all sectors. It might actually be complete, I didn't get out there today, but we're getting real close to that as well. You can see, you guys were out at the topping out ceremony. You can see metal roof panel placement is in multiple sectors at this point, and we've even begun some fireproofing in the sectors that have been dried in at this point. So really working to dry in sectors of the facility as we get into the bad weather, the challenging weather months, so we can continue to work as we work towards getting this facility completed in the summer, so we can open it in August of twenty-four. Moving down to the School Electronic Message Signs Project, they have been ordered at this point, we're awaiting them, we're receiving them, and then you can see we have started some of the electrical infrastructure has begun at five of our schools now. So we're starting that electrical infrastructure in advance of the signs showing up, so we can place the signs, and then we can get them hooked up and ready for use. Moving over to the Austin Road Middle School, Stockbridge Middle School Athletic Facilities Improvement, you can see doing a lot of work at both of the scoring towers. The stairs at Stockbridge Middle School have been completed now, scoring, the caps have been poured, sidewalks around the scoring towers have been repoured as well. And then at Austin Road Middle School, kind of the same thing, and in addition to that, there is going to be a new parking lot there, so you can see that grading is nearing completion. We complete that grading, we'll start the building of the parking lot to get that completed as well. So making good progress on that project currently. Down to the new administrative office facility, lots of things going on out there, a lot of demo, a lot of site work that you're seeing right now. The houses have been demolished at this point. Installation of storm piping and plumbing has begun, you can see a lot of that out there. Grading and fill for the building pad has actually been completed at this point, and the footings have also been poured. So we're complete with footing work out there now, and you can see also underground electrical conduit for the new fiber is nearing completion as well. So a lot of in-ground work right now as we work towards getting the slab in and going vertical on that project that we hope to do in December. And then finally, down to the new transportation facility and the renovations to the existing transportation facility. You can, if you ride out there now, you can start to see erosion control measures have been put in place, cleaning government of the site has, it says to begin shortly in grading, but we have begun grading out there as well. We've put in some of the detention ponds. So the grading activities will start out there, you'll see that really take off in the next couple of weeks. And then down in post-construction, you can see we're still working on some closeout documents, both for the Fairview Elementary School Modification Project and Security Access Control Project. And one final note, we did put out the cooling tower replacement project for Austin Road Elementary School, and East Lake Elementary School was put out for bid today, so we'll take those bids December fourteenth. I'll bring them to you guys for approval at the January board meeting. Dr. Davis, that completes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Malcolm. Madam Chair, that concludes what we've prepared, but remain available for the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Malcolm. Any questions? Dr. Nutt?
I was born for comment. I just wanted to tell you and your staff and everyone, Birch Creek is just a beautiful school. When you drive up that hill, that's just an amazing, and I hope it gets to stay that way. Do you remember the last school we opened?
Well, we opened McDonough High and Middle in twenty-nineteen, replacement for Henry County High School, Henry County Middle School. The last that we did for, that we had to draw attendance lines was Rocky Creek Elementary School.
Okay, so it's been a while since we-
It has been a while. Yes, for a new elementary school.
Wow, that's just amazing. Again, I just want to thank you for you and your team, because y'all have stayed on top of this in all of the additions and repairs and everything else for day to day. It's just amazing. Thank you again.
Any more questions? No questions? All right, moving on down the agenda, C informational item three B. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I'd like to invite Ms. Clay to the podium to provide informational item C three B, which is our October twenty-twenty-three financial report. Ms. Clay?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Davis. Today I bring a report of the financial activity for the period ending October thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three. I'll start the report with a look across all funds. Looking at the last column of the report in the yellow highlight, you can see that we've collected nearly twenty-four percent of the planned revenues to date across all of the funds. Looking down the page to the green highlight, we see that expenditures to date are approaching thirty-five percent of the budgetary plan. Moving along, we'll review the general fund activity next. With the fourth month of the fiscal year now complete, we are thirty-three percent through our year on a linear basis. We have collected twenty-two point eight percent of our planned receipts to date, which is shown in the yellow highlight, and you can anticipate that this percentage will increase next month as we begin to receive those property tax revenues. Turning your eye to the bottom half of the page and looking at the green highlight, you can see that we've incurred expenses representing thirty-two percent of the budget. When the obligations for the month are taken into account, which is the third column from the right, of six point three million dollars, we actually reached thirty-three percent of the budgetary plan, which is right in line with the pace of the fiscal year. Next, we will review the general fund balance sheet. The total value of general fund assets at the close of October totaled sixty-two million. The next slide provides a view of cash on hand across all funds. The total of cash and equivalent investments totaled two hundred and seventy-six point eight million dollars for the reporting period. Moving to our education splat, we will first look at the financial report for splat five. There were expenditures of a hundred and four thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, as shown in the second column from the right. For splat six, the second column from the right outlines October's expenditures, which totaled three point seven million dollars, which bring total project expenditures to just over twenty-five percent of the splat six plan. If we'll advance to the splat six report. Perfect. Next, we will review to the capital accumulation financial report. There were expenditures of one point two million dollars for the month. Dr. Davis, that concludes what I've prepared, and I yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Ms. Clay. Madam Chair, that concludes what we've prepared, but remain available for the discussion.
Thank you, Mrs. Clay. Does anyone have any concerns or questions for Mrs. Clay? No, seeing no hands. No, all right, thank you for your report, Mrs. Clay. Okay, yes, all right, the next, Ms. Clay is standing there because she's reporting again. Okay, the next item on the agenda is D, business item one. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I'd like to invite Ms. Clay to remain at the podium to provide business item D one. Ms. Clay?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Superintendent Davis. You are aware that we have been developing a muscle of monitoring and adjusting our budget at a mid-year point, as the performance against our forecast is actually realized. As we have improved our capacity, we are positioned to take advantage of arising opportunities and bring forth a mid-year adjustment this month. I'll start with the instructional needs that have been identified. Recently, we have been approached by Georgia Decal, the entity that authorizes the state pre-K sites, with an inquiry of interest to open additional preschool sites within our community. We know that pre-K access is a tremendous need and are fortunate to have funds available to accommodate the Decal opportunity with programming as early as January being considered. In an earlier information item, we discussed the opening of Birch Creek, and the mid-year adjustment recommendation considers investments that are necessary to ensure the academic resources from the media center content to the classrooms are able to be ordered in time for arrival and placement, in time for the August twenty-twenty-four opening. Finally, our transition and our staffing strategy for substitute teachers, we've seen an impressive increase in our substitute fulfillment rate. As we seek to ensure our school leaders continue to have access to the instructional support that is provided by the substitute workforce, additional funding needs to be allocated. In total, two point nine million dollars of investments for instructional needs have been identified for the mid-year budget adjustment. Additionally, we have identified funding needs of eight hundred and forty-three thousand for operational needs around maintenance and business services. The recommendation is to allocate additional funding to perform operational repairs that have emerged off-cycle, and support implementation adjustments to the Enterprise Resource Planning System, including the purchase of peripheral technology. In summary, it is recommended that the board authorize an FY twenty-four budgetary increase of three million, seven hundred and seven, seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars to fund initiatives for pre-K expansion, Birch Creek learning resources, substitute staffing, operational corrective actions, and ERP implementation peripheral support. This concludes all that I've prepared, and this item is eligible for the consent agenda. Madam Superintendent, I yield the floor to you.
Thank you, Ms. Clay. Madam Chair, that concludes what we've prepared, but remain available for the discussion.
Mr. McKenzie?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ms. Clay, for this. I do have a question, and I did not think about it until over the weekend and even until today, about the substitute program, and I know that there was something that was brought to us by Dr. Knowlton to make sure that we had substitutes inside of our schools. And the question that I had, and I don't know if you'll be able to answer it, but the question I had was, is the enhanced funding or the increased funding for substitute teachers, is it because we've had a greater need for substitutes, because we've had more teacher callouts, or is it because we're paying them more? What is the, what's the need? Or why is it that is required?
I can start, and then we will see if we need to engage our HR chief, but I think it's twofold. I think first, we have struggled to reach the levels of substitute fulfillment rates that we're achieving this year. Our average substitute fulfillment rate was only forty-five percent for all of last year, which results in teachers having to cover other teachers' classrooms, pooling and putting additional strain on our workforce. We are seeing that there are attendance things, and we are reviewing those and have shared those as well.
Okay, so it is a combination of both, absenteeism, and then just, which is the increase of why we're having to do this. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? I do have, I do have a question. How often does Human Resources, and maybe Dr. Knowlton can answer this question, get a report from the ESS regarding the number of substitutes that are entering the schools per day or per month?
Yeah, I'm happy to go ahead and defer to Dr. Knowlton to report on our reporting mechanism from ESS.
And I'm happy to report that we're talking with the ESS daily. We, the direct answer to your question is on a weekly basis, but we're speaking with them on a daily basis as it relates to all our staffing, as it relates to serving.
Thank you. All right, oh, Dr. Nutt?
So with the additional funding for pre-K, we will be able to start a pre-K in January, or?
That's what we've been approached to consider and are looking to authorize funding so that we can pursue Decal's requests.
That's great. That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Clay. This item has been recommended for the consent agenda. Any concerns or objections? Seeing none, this item will be placed on the consent agenda. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, business, on the agenda is business item D two. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I'd like to invite Mr. Malcolm to the podium to provide business item D two, which is Policy KG Use of Facilities. Mr. Malcolm?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Davis, the second item I have for you. Guys, tonight is Policy KG Use of School Facilities. Per Policy BD, Policy Development and Regulation BDR one, policy revision and adoption by the board requires a first reading of the revised policy at a public meeting. This was accomplished October ninth, twenty-twenty-three. After this reading, the policy was out for public review and comment until this month's board meeting. With public comment received and shared with the board, action can now be taken at this meeting concerning proposed revisions to Policy KG. As shared last month, Policy KG and the upcoming regulation are being revised- As shared last month, policy KG and the upcoming regulation are being revised to conform to policy changes, recognize the addition of a second performing arts center, and update rental fees for the performing arts centers. Uh, Dr. Davis concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Malcolm. Madam Chair, that concludes what we've prepared, but remain available for the discussion.
Are there any discussions or concerns? Because this item has been recommended for the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. Hearing none, seeing none. Um, this item will be placed on the consent agenda. Thank you. Um, next business item is D three. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, I'd like to invite Mr. Malcolm to remain at the podium for business item D three, which is East Splosts six bus, bus purchase.
Yeah, the th, the third item I have for you guys tonight is the, uh, bus purchase for East Splosts year three. Uh, with voter approval of East Splosts on March 16th, 2021, bus purchase was included as part of the initiative. This is the third iteration of the East Splosts six bus purchase that will total 125 over a period of five years. This will be done each November, uh, for five years total. Uh, through Yan, through the Yancey Bus Sales Contract, quotes totaling $4,723,800 were received for, for these 33 buses October 24th. Reimbursement from the state will total $1,983,120. Total cost to be applied to Splosts six transportation will be $2,740,8680. Through the first three years, 84 buses have been purchased versus the 75 originally budgeted due to state funding also being approved for, for bus purchases. The breakdown for these buses will be 23, 72 passenger air-conditioned buses and 10, 48 passenger, uh, ESC air-conditioned, uh, buses. Dr. Davis concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Malcolm. Madam Chair, that concludes what we have prepared. Remain available for the discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Malcolm. Does anyone have any questions or concerns? Okay.
I just have one comment. Kudos to you and your staff for finding the funds necessary to make sure that we continuously replace our buses. Um, I hear a lot out in our community about how they are ecstatic about the new buses, seeing some of the old dinosaurs go to the boneyard. So, I'm grateful for what your staff is doing, finding the funds necessary to get our students new buses, and as Ms. Edwards is probably cheering right now about, they're all AC. So, uh, thank you all for what you're doing, and we really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Alright, this item has been, uh, recommended for the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. Is there, are there any more concerns? None. This item will be placed on the consent agenda. Thank you so much, Mr. Malcolm. Uh, D, business item four. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, I'd like to invite Mr. Malcolm to remain at the podium for business item D four, the Birch Creek Elementary Furniture. Mr. Malcolm?
So the last item I have for you guys tonight is the elementary school furniture purchase at Birch Creek. Uh, on January 11th, 2021, at the regular board meeting business session, East Splosts six resolution was approved. With voter approval on March 16th, 2021 of East Splosts six, planning for construction projects included, uh, within the resolution started. On August 8th, 2022, at the regular board meeting business session, the tabulation for construction of Birch Creek Elementary School was approved. East Splosts six funds will be used for furniture purchase at Birch Creek Elementary School. New elementary school furniture purchase is in relation to Strategic Action Five, Initiative Statement Three, tactic three, create basic equipment list for every classroom, school common space, and office space, and design review, solicitation, and replacement schedule. Uh, estimated life cycle will be 20 years for the administrative and common space furniture, and 15 years for classroom furniture being approved today. New Idea Incorporated provided a final quote totaling $1,3000, $3,669 on October 31st. Production is estimated at eight to 10 weeks. The goal is to receive the furniture for Birch Creek Elementary School during the spring 2024 and complete installation for school year 24, 25. Dr. Davis concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Malcolm. Madam Chair, that concludes what we've prepared, but remain available for discussion.
Thank you. Does anyone have any concerns or questions for Mr. Malcolm? Seeing none, hearing none. Um, this item has been recommended for the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. Are there any concerns? No questions. It will be placed on the consent agenda. Thank you so much, Mr. Malcolm. Uh, moving on down the agenda, D, business item five. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, I'd like to invite Mr. Mattox to the podium to provide business item D five, which is an investment in, in instructional and technical infrastructure. Mr. Mattox?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Superintendent Davis. Today I bring a business item to you. We want to renew and expand license of the educational program Jigsaw Learning Adaptive Software. This resource is used to support students with learning needs in achieving Georgia's extended standards by supplementing and tailoring interventions. The superintendent is recommending the renewal and expansion of licensing of this indication and the adaptive resources in support of students that we serve in special education. Superintendent Davis, this, uh, concludes all that I've prepared, and I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mattox. Madam Chair, that concludes what we've prepared, but remain available for the discussion.
Questions? Questions? Okay, no concerns. This item has been recommended to be placed on the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. Um, and there are no objections. It will be placed on the consent agenda. Thank you, um, Mr. Mattox. Uh, the next business item is D six. Dr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, I'd like to invite Mr. Mattox to remain at the podium to provide business item D six. Mr. Mattox?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Superintendent Davis. I bring another business item to you to renew and expand licenses of the educational program News to You, Unique Learning System. This instructional resource offers an interactive environment for students on the adaptive curriculum. The student, the superintendent is recommending the renewal and expansion of licenses in the amount indicated above, and this resource will be used to support students in our special education program. Superintendent Davis, this concludes what I've prepared, and I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mattox. Madam Chair, that concludes what we've prepared, but remain available for the discussion.
Are there any questions or concerns? Any questions for Mr. Mattox? Okay. If not, this item has been recommended for the consent agenda, and it will be placed on the, uh, consent agenda for this evening's meeting. Dr. Davis, next business item is D seven.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, I'd like to invite Ms. McCrery to the podium to provide business item D seven. This is investment in the continuation of marching band uniform replacements. Ms. McCrery?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Madam Superintendent. In alignment with Strategic Action Five, Initiative Three, establish a basic equipment list and growth and replacement plan of basic equipment, the superintendent recommends the acquisition of band uniforms for Luella, Stockbridge, and Union Grove High Schools in accordance with the district's band uniform replacement plan. Each of these schools' existing uniforms inventory is over 20 years old. The superintendent recommend, superintendent recommends this arts-for-artz purchase not to exceed the amount indicated from Fruhoff and DeMullion. Purchasing requirements were met, um, following policy DJE. Madam Superintendent, this item is available for the consent agenda, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Ms. McCrery. Madam Chair, that concludes what we've prepared, but remain available for the discussion.
Any discussions or concerns? No, but I do, um, have a comment. Um, I hope that the parents are watching from the various schools, because I've been asked, uh, several times, who made the selection of the uniforms? So do you mind just going over that piece for me, please, because I could not tell them. I directed them to the principal, but he said, "Well, I just got on board," so I don't know.
So our finance department worked in collaboration with the schools to assess the condition of the current uniforms that were in place. And honestly, this really fell into, aligned with the year of construction of the school. And so, as a result of Eurovision and investment, schools that had uniform inventories that were over 30 years old included McDonough because of the old branded uniforms, as well as Eagles Landing, so I hope you've had a chance to check those uniforms out. And so now we're at the next wave of 20-year, and so we have a replacement plan that is aligned to that timeline.
So who actually part, had a chance to partake in the conversation? School council, principals?
So the, um, our coordinator, as well as our team, had an opportunity to have conversations with the school team.
Thank you. I saw there are no questions or concerns. This, this McDaniel?
I just want to say you took the words right out of my mouth, so I appreciate it. But I did see some principals out here that's geared to get some new uniforms for their band. Star smiling, one's smiling right now. Uh, so congratulations to you. I know it's a long time coming, uh, but I look forward to seeing these new uniforms out there and showcasing, uh, what our, our, um, our band, uh, students can do. And thank you and your staff for continuously, uh, making sure that we are getting new uniforms that about the half the age of how, uh, old I am. So I appreciate you for that. Thank you so much.
This item has been recommended for the consent agenda for this evening's meeting. Um, and I see nobody has any objections or no questions, so it will be placed on the consent agenda. Thank you very much. Dr. Davis, the next business item is D eight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the Board, I'd like to invite Ms. McCrery to remain at the podium, provide business item D eight. Ms. McCrery?
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Madam Superintendent. In alignment with Strategic Action One, Initiative Two, to create and increase exploration of, access to, and participation in advanced content coursework and experiences in our career pathways, the superintendent recommends the acquisition of Microsoft Pro Surface Tablets and electronic interactive components for the previously purchased Juno mannequins, which are in our healthcare science pathways at all, at our schools, AAS, Dutch Town, Eagles Landing, Locust Grove, Luella, Hampton, McDonough, Ola, Stockbridge, Union Grove, and Woodland. This purchase also includes the acquisition of mannequin arms for practicing IV catheterization for healthcare science at AAS. The superintendent recommends this purchase, Perkins Five purchase in the amount indicated from CAE Healthcare, and purchasing requirements were met following DJE. Madam Superintendent, this item is also available for the consent agenda, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Ms. McCrery. Madam Chair, that concludes what we've prepared, but remain available for the discussion.
Thank you so much. Uh, Ms. Poe?
Yes, thank you. And you already know that I am just, like, borderline emotional about this. We had the most incredible visit at Luella High School last week, and Ray, our new best friend, who we want all of our children to grow up to be, um, was just the most incredible student ambassador and led us around the school, and he shared with us his aspirations to go into the medical field. And he, on his own, elaborated about the mannequins that were purchased and are now in the healthcare science rooms, and how they have helped him realize his dreams of going into the medical field. So, uh, Ms. McCrery and I were, like, giddy walking down the hall, hearing him talk about this, but it really is just incredible to hear how these decisions truly impact the lives of our students and their future. So I am so excited to get some arms to go with these mannequins. Um, and thank you so much for the work that you're doing.
And with that comment, are there any other comments? Mine either. Um, this item has been recommended for the consent agenda this, for this evening's, uh, for this evening, so it will be placed on the consent agenda. No concerns. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is executive session. So can I get a motion to go into the executive session for the purpose of, listen carefully, personnel, discipline, safety and security, and legal? Can I get a motion?
I make a motion to go into the executive session for personnel, safety and security?
Discipline.
Discipline and legal. I wrote it down and still got it wrong.
Is there a second? Back up. All in favor? Alright, five zero. Thank you. We're now in executive session. We'll be back. Good evening. Can I have a motion to come out of executive session?
I make a motion that we come out of executive session.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Four. Thank you. We're out of executive session. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes read in executive session?
I make a motion we approve the minutes as read in executive session.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Four, zero. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel discussed? Okay, thank you. Alright, so I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Madam Politarian?
Uh, Madam Chair, have we adjourned the study session?
Yes. Now, we're not out of the, uh, the study session. During the study session.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening and welcome to this business meeting of the Henry County Board of Education. In order to ensure productive meeting, attendees at the meeting have agreed to the decorum expected of a meeting of the Board of Education. Disruption to conducting the business of the Board will result in the Board moving to recess or suspension of the meeting to a later date. I know we have a productive meeting ahead, and I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you very much. Um, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag, please. We now call the seven o'clock meeting to order. And Dr. Davis, the welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and to our Henry County community. Welcome to the business meeting of the Henry County Board of Education. It's time for the month of November 2023. As we begin this meeting, I do want to apologize for the inconvenience posed by our temporary disruption to our live stream capabilities that has resulted from our Henry County Schools network outage. Of course, attendance in person is welcomed, and I'm so glad to see you here today. And we are recording this meeting, and we'll have it uploaded to the Henry County Schools YouTube channel in the next 24 hours. But as you know, it's been since mid-morning Thursday that we have been operating with disrupted access to our Henry County Schools network, which resulted in the loss of internet connection across the entire district. It has been amazing, however, to see the agility of our organization kick in, and I'm pleased to report that we have successfully operated schools and provided student services since that time. As always, the Henry County team of professionals, our students, and our parents have responded with amazing adaptability as we keep school operations going, maintain student learning, and maintain functionality of our core business applications. But what we do know now is that suspicious activity was detected on our network last week. As you would expect, we take matters of this nature very seriously, and we activated our protocol, which includes immediately engaging with our partners. Those partners include the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, the FBI, Georgia Emergency Management Agency, the Henry County PD, Henry County Emergency Management Agency, and our cybersecurity partners to collectively investigate the suspicious activity. I can confirm that the right people and the right agencies are working around the clock to investigate the source and the scope of the suspicious activity, which at this time is simply not clear. I can confirm that we also have the right people doing extraordinary work to maintain school operations and continuous student learning without internet services. And also important, we have been able to maintain continuity of our core business functions, including paying bills, cutting checks, and preparing payroll for this Friday, for the educators in the room. I do, however, know that this is a growing inconvenience in our schools and throughout our district departments, but I am encouraged, as I always am, by the flexibility of our team of professionals, and I commit to keeping everyone updated as this investigation continues and we work to securely restore our network services. Now, just as we have across our entire organization over the last two and a half days and continued operations, we are prepared to continue with a productive meeting of the Board of Education this evening. So before I turn it over to the Chair, I do have to begin with recognizing that this is Kindness Week across our district and it's Kindness Week across the world next week. But I do believe we have a community who is committed to the character of kindness, and I'm excited to put that on display with a recent event that was co-hosted by the Chair of the Henry County Board of Education, Mrs. Annette Edwards, and the Chair of our County Commission, Mrs. Carlotta Harrell, as they made sure our community wraps around kids so they can read. Let's take a look at the video that captures it all.
Well, I'm gonna read a book to you today, and it's called With Lots of Love by Jeanie Torres Sanchez. Had a new home, but she really missed her other home. The little house where she used to live with her grandma, Tirola, and her cousin.
So Rosio jumped out of the bed and ran to it.
A teacher sat on Rosio's nightstand, and Rosio blew Abuela a good night's kiss.
We're fully aware of the Board's efforts through their strategic plan to support STEM education, and it starts with students having sound reading skills in the classroom.
Reading Across Henry is a very unique event where the two Chairs, Board of Commissioners' Chair Harrell and Board of Education Annette Edwards, come together to read to our students, which is a very important concept in Henry County. It brings the community together with connecting everybody to our students in our district and our community.
So I agree with Chair Edwards. You know, you have to take time out to read to your children. One of the things that I used to do with my daughter is we would have 30 minutes of reading time every day. So take away those electronics, put down the cell phones and the video games, and set aside 30 minutes for your child to be able to read.
Rosio searched for the brightest star and made a wish. In the morning, Rosio woke up to Mama and Papa, her brother and her sister singing.
Okay, so now everyone picks up a book tonight and says, "Good night." Madam Chair, that concludes my welcome, and I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mrs. Pope, our Vice Chair, will share our vision and mission statement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Henry County Schools is on a mission to empower all students with exceptional opportunities and access that lead to success in a global society, with a vision to ensure a high-quality, world-class education for every student. Thank you, Madam Chair, for reminding us of that at the beginning of the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Dr. Davis, do we have any inspirations?
We sure do. As always, the Board of Education starts its business with students at the center, and today it is Austin Road Middle School who will be performing, their band ensemble is performing. And what I'm most excited about and slightly distracted by is that the piano that has been here since I joined this organization for the first time has its cover removed and appears that it will be played tonight. So I'm going to welcome the students from Austin Road Middle School. Just so excited to celebrate the arts taking center stage in Henry County Austin Road Middle School. That was beautiful singing and playing, and to our fine arts educators, in this case, Mr. Williams, that was absolutely extraordinary. Thank you so much for making this evening possible. And Principal Ms. Britton is also here to celebrate her students. Madam Chair, I can't imagine being more inspired, and I'll turn it back over to you.
Absolutely. Thank you all so much. The next item on the agenda is awards and recognition. Dr. Davis, do we have many awards and recognitions?
Yes, if the Board would join me down front so we can celebrate our students and our staff.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, Madam Chair, and members of the Board. Welcome to everyone joining us tonight. I'm Executive Director for Communications Kyle Sears, and will be facilitating awards and recognitions. This evening, we will be recognizing exceptional work by students along with their teachers and administrators who help set and maintain the conditions for exceptional learning in Henry County Schools. The Superintendent's art gallery recognizes outstanding student artists whose work is put on display throughout the district office. Congratulations to the following high school artists who had art chosen for display during the 2023-2024 school year. From the Academy for Advanced Studies, Sarah Garrison, Kylie Franklin, Autumn Kelly, Matias Paramo, Cameron Olson, Chrislyn Simpson, and Allison Miles. They are accompanied tonight by Principal Dr. Douglas Blackwell and art teacher Melissa Wood. From Dutch Town High School, Summer Lewis and Lena Voe, accompanied tonight by Assistant Principal Dr. Jamila Martin. From Eagles Landing High School, Abdullah Fami and Mahogany Brown, accompanied tonight by Principal Dr. Keisha Jones and art teacher Jessica Yimmel. From Hampton High School, Victoria Moran and Shontavi Ung, accompanied tonight by art teacher Johnny Bowen. From Impact Academy, not here this evening, but her artwork is on display, Kylie Waite. From Luella High School, Dane Jones and Janaya McDowell. They're accompanied by Principal Brandy Hardnett and art teacher David Carroll. From McDonough High School, Lauren Anderson, Kang Lu, and Yael Charles, accompanied tonight by art teacher Andre Thompson. From Ola High School, Christine Herr and Charlotte Smith, accompanied tonight by Assistant Principal Jessica Portwood. From Stockbridge High School, Rhana Howland, CJ Wilson, and Joseph Brown. From Union Grove High School, Kendrick Black, Brooke Davies, Jordan Hen- From Union Grove High School, Kendrick Black, Brooke Davies, Jordan Hensley, Nicole Gerhardt, Tiana Tillman, and Julie Levitt, accompanied by Assistant Principal Dr. Charles Height. And representing Woodland High School, they couldn't be here tonight, but their art is on the screen, Jay Sean Bass and Jaden Clark. Dr. Davis, this concludes an extraordinary evening of celebration and recognition of exceptional outcomes by our students, teachers, and leaders.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for October 9th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes from October 9th.
Okay, is your second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes? Five zero. Motion passed. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Dr. Davis?
Madam Parliamentarian, I'll turn it over to you regarding public participation.
Yes, thank you Superintendent Davis. The purpose of public participation is for the board to hear public comment regarding items on the posted agenda or other subjects pertinent to the board and the Henry County Schools community. As a reminder, the window to sign up for public participation is from 6:00 PM to 6:55 PM in the lobby. Those who have signed up for public participation have agreed to the following parameters governing their participation. First, each speaker will have three minutes to address the members of the Henry County Board of Education. Unused time may not be given to another speaker. Speakers may not use vulgar or insulting language, name a student or employee individually, or discuss any confidential matters. Any violation of these parameters will result in a courtesy reminder. Any further violation will result in the speaker's time being forfeited. Speakers will be called in the order they signed up until the last speaker is called. Our first speaker this evening is Christopher Singleton, followed by Dr. Cheryl Neely. And Mr. Singleton, as you approach, just make sure that the green light at the base of that microphone is on. You may begin when you're ready.
Now, elementary school involving alleged physical assault of our child and for other students by their teacher. We also present to you today because of the poor response that we got from the district level. As parents, we are daily checking in for our child who is angry and hurt by the situation. He has voiced concerns about his teacher's return and questions what he did wrong to be treated that way. Based on Henry County School strategic plan, transparency seems to be the cornerstone of its entirety. The recent allegations of the physical assault by the teacher has raised significant concerns amongst parents and people in our community. We have only spoken to the principal at Dutch Town twice, who was only able to give us limited information. We spoke to District 5 Representative of the BOE, and he said he could not speak to us in that matter, but we should respond as parents. We attempted almost daily with no success to speak to the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent for Area 4, HR Representative for Investigation, the legal compliance officer, and at best, we got a one secretary who again says she couldn't speak to us. Per the student handbook, there is nothing that covers follow-up with parents or children who report staff and faculty misconduct, only disciplinary action if they misrepresent their complaint. However, per the policy, our son has been interviewed by the principal, counselor, school resource officers, CPS, to gather information. And due to the CPS interview, the parents were not a subject of the investigation, but we were not notified that he was being interviewed by CPS. However, the media teacher was given at least 10 to 15 days for grievance procedure, and she gets a decision per the board policy after being placed on leave. Please let us be clear, as parents, we do have the right to be informed about steps being taken to address this serious matter and burden our child, specifically in a way that does not violate HR policy. The only information that we received was through news reports and Google searches. In conclusion, we expect nothing less than the board to take immediate steps to enhance their transparency in this situation and to improve for further situations in the future. We thank you for your time and commitment to ensuring the safety of our children in the district.
Thank you, Mr. Singleton. Our next speaker is Dr. Cheryl Neely, followed by Brittany Henderson.
My heart is very full this evening. Greetings, Henry County Board Chair Edwards, board members, and Superintendent Davis. I am here today in support of my granddaughter and all of the scholars who were impacted by the incident on October 26th. Some students were students with disabilities, and so my heart hurts for all of the students that were impacted. I am also here today to advocate for our high school students with disabilities. Henry County School System has clearly branded our students with disabilities by placing special education courses, course numbers on their transcripts. College admissions reps and scholarship committees are very aware that a .9 or a .8 behind the decimal of any course number represents special education courses. Therefore, students with disabilities are at risk of being denied admission to great colleges and universities and lucrative scholarships. Many school districts have removed the special education course numbers from transcripts years ago, including my district. So I'm asking that you please consider doing the same, as this is a discriminatory practice against students with disabilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Neely. Our next speaker is Brittany Henderson, followed by Thomas Payne.
Good evening to the Henry County Board of Education, everyone here. Dr. Davis, Superintendent. I am the parent, a parent of one of the students that was assaulted at Dutch Town Elementary. October 25th, our life shattered for our entire family. A professional that works for Henry County Schools at Dutch Town Elementary allegedly hit my 10-year-old daughter along with four other students. My daughter is a student that has disabilities. She's a part of special education. I feel that the correct accountability was not given to the staff member. The fact that the staff member was placed on administrative leave pending investigation-
Ms. Henderson, I'm actually going to stop you because you're getting into confidential matters, and I can't let you continue on confidential matters. So if you can steer away from that, you still have time.
While our family deal with the aftermath of my daughter, emotionally, physically, and mentally, it has affected our household. We have not given any type of apology, anyone from Henry County Schools, or we have not received any information about the investigation. But we have received DFAC showing up at our home for my daughter, along with other individuals. Also, background checked on me as well. But I'm here to advocate for my daughters and other students that was affected by this incident. We have not received any information from the board or anyone from Henry County Schools. My daughter is now physically removed from Dutch Town. We requested a transfer two weeks ago, and still, we don't have an answer. So which causes us to lose income so I can homeschool her because she does not have a school to go to. My daughter loves school, and she's missing school and her friends. I feel like everybody should take accountability for this situation, not just the principals or the people, everyone that was affected, but also Henry County Board of Education. My daughter is now being supported by her family and also psychologists, and I hope that you all look into this matter so the proper justice can be served for everyone and my daughter. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson. Our final speaker this evening is Thomas Payne.
Thank you for hearing me, board. I didn't put a statement on a statement. I'm here to advocate on my granddaughter's behalf and other special education children. It seems like that's an ongoing thing in Henry County Schools, that they let them down. My granddaughter's been removed from two schools this year, and it's due to the fact of her IEP. It's stated in her IEP, she has ADHD, bipolar, and they let a teacher file assault charge on her for bumping into her in a hall. As soon as I said, then you're going to have to remove the teacher from the class if she comes back, they expelled her for the entire year. My next step is AJC. That's my attorney attorney. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you, Mr. Payne.
And I have called the board multiple times, and I get for these people to answer the phones, they don't have time to talk to you. Y'all need to realize taxpayers pay your salary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Payne. Dr. Davis, that concludes our public participation for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Parliamentarian. Madam Chair, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is H, business items. They were placed on the consent agenda during the study session, and it's H1 through 8. So can I get a motion to approve these items that were placed on the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda items H1 through 8.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Five zero, motion passed. The next item on the agenda is personnel. Business item is personnel. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel discussed in executive session?
I move that we approve the personnel as presented in executive session.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the personnel that was discussed in executive session? Raise your hand. Five zero, motion passed. All right, now we're down to I. This is item I, Board Superintendent Closing Remarks. Dr. Nutt, would you like to start us off?
Sure, thank you. Sorry about that, trying to get situated here. On the calendar, we had National School Psychology Week was the 6th through the 10th, World Kindness Week was the 13th through the 17th, and I wanted to congratulate Ms. Ella Meandro from Ola High School for her appointment to the State Superintendent's Advisory Council. Wow, good job. And congratulations to Luella High School volleyball team for their state first-round appearance. Congratulations to Locust Grove High School volleyball team for their state first round of play. Congratulations to Locust Grove High School softball team for their state playoff. Also, I wanted to congratulate the ROTC at Locust Grove for their Veterans' Day luncheon for post 516. They were present there with the veterans, and that was amazing. That was a wonderful luncheon. The ROTC was also present on Friday at Luella as we had our walkthrough. And speaking of Luella, we had the opportunity to see Ms. Ebony Tucker. She was a teacher. She was doing a one-act play, Murder Box by Reed Conrad, in her homeroom class, and the drama club were presenting the one-act play. They were amazing to watch. Mr. Williams, with his audiovisual class during first period, they were making suggestions. What did they see? How did they, how they thought it should go. I was introduced to an amazing student, Zachary Swase. He's Student of the Month, and evidently, he had too much going on because he couldn't fill out my card. He does everything. He was amazing. And the last class I was able to visit was Ms. Keisha Williams, and her class allowed me to do their science experiments with them. Dawson Yarborough and Charles Gordon, thank you for letting me help, even though y'all had a better understanding of what was going on than I did. And we also want to congratulate Luella Football Team on their second round of playoffs. They will go to Stevenson High School. They will play Stevenson on Friday. Go Lions!
Thank you, Dr. Nutt. Mr. McKenzie?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to say that I honor our psychologists, as last week was National School Psychology Week, and as we know, this is World Kindness Week, as we're all dressed in our blue today. So we also recognize American Education Week this week, National Education Support Professionals Day on the 15th, and Substitute Educators' Day on the 17th. I also want to say congratulations to the McDonough High School volleyball team for their Sweet 16 playoff. This is the first time in school's history. Congratulations to the Hampton High School volleyball team for their state first-round appearance. Congratulations to the Hampton High School softball team for their state appearance. I also want to say congratulations to Dutch Town High School for advancing to the second round of the football playoffs. Dr. Nutt has already alluded to Luella Lions, so we are happy for them. I also want to say congratulations to Stockbridge High's defensive end, Camreen Reese, who is now the all-time Stockbridge High's leader in sacks, as well as to Stockbridge High's Jaden Duke Scott, who is now the all-time leading rusher and also holds the touchdown record now at Stockbridge High. And lastly, Madam Chair, I just want to say to my colleagues, congratulations for our Governance Team of the Year honors. It's a true testament of our collective will and desire to ensure all of our scholars are educated and that staff members have the resources necessary to teach our scholars. And as a Governance Team of the Year finalists, we recognize our successes, and we're excited about them. But one thing about that, we also recognize our inadequacies. And I just want to say this from the bottom of my heart, that with the redistricting that came up, I now have seven clusters. Don't know how that happened. And over the last month, I will say that there's been two clusters of mine that has gone through some heartache and pain, one at Hampton High, one at Dutch Town High. And I will say that my heart goes out to those communities as to what has happened, what has happened to our scholars there. And I will say that there was a time where my phone did not stop ringing from the community about what happened, what's going on, the level of communication that we have to our community during the time in which, as Ms. Edwards always says, is on fire. But I understood that when I ran for office, one of the things that you have to do is- But I understood that when I ran for office, one of the things that you have to do is that you have got to speak when it's good and speak when it's bad. And I made a commitment to my constituents that I will always speak for them and be their voice, no matter if it's good, bad, whether I'm liked or whether I'm not liked. And I want to say to my constituents in my district that elected me and that I represent, that I truly feel your pain. I feel what you are going through. But I want to let you all know, those that have called me, those that have texted me, those that have even hit me on Facebook, that we will get through this, that we will continue to ensure that our scholars are protected, that our community is protected, and that our scholars are getting the best education they can right here in Henry County. That is my commitment, that is our commitment to the 40-some-odd-thousand students in Henry County and 6,000 employees. And there's not a day, nor is there a night, that our superintendent, that her executive cabinet, that my colleagues sitting here recognize what we have to do. There are going to be times in which it will be hard, but let me tell you something, when it gets hard, we're going to be right there with you. So to the Dutch Town community, to the Hampton community, just know you are not in this alone, and you're not in this by yourself. Madam Chair, I thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Board Member McKenzie. Ms. Pope.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. There is so much to celebrate around District 4 and our entire community, but I just want to say a special congratulations to the Eagles Landing High School volleyball team for their state Sweet 16 playoff appearance. Also, congratulations to the Union Grove High School softball team for their state appearance, and to the Eagles Landing Middle School on their county middle school championship. We're so proud of all of our students and student athletes. Last week, we had a super exciting week as we were able to celebrate Veterans Day, and if you were not able to see all of the incredible things happening around our district to celebrate Veterans Day, I encourage you to go look. It was just really heartwarming to see our schools and our students just pay our appreciation to our veterans. We also were joined by our county leadership and members of our delegation and head of our county agencies for our legislative breakfast on Friday, and it's just incredible to see this community come together all for what we can do better for students. So I'm super grateful for the commitment far and wide for the betterment of our school system. Also, we celebrated STEM Day last week, and I was able to go to Wesley Lakes Elementary School where I was, yay! I was blown away at these young engineers building little cat houses. So if you have a cat and need a home for it, go over to the engineers at Wesley Lakes, where they can show you exactly how to construct the sturdiest of cat houses out of some popsicle sticks and index cards. But I was just really amazed at the incredible efforts to make STEM super exciting. They had a STEM Day they were preparing for when we were there that I didn't get to see come to fruition, but I know that it was just wonderful and kids just had the best time. So thank you to all of our STEM educators for making it so fun. Lastly, and she does not want me to do this, but you've heard Dr. Davis brag often about our board being finalist for Governance Team of the Year, but she is one of the four finalists for the State Superintendent of the Year. And it takes an incredible leader to lead an incredible team, and I know she's already pointing at the team, and we do have the best team. But in the spirit of Thanksgiving and thankfulness, we are so thankful for your leadership and just the conviction that you have every single day to do what's right for kids. So thank you for your leadership, and we're so proud of you. We can't wait to celebrate.
Thank you, Mrs. Pope. Mrs. Cobb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you all for being here tonight. I'm just going to share a few exciting things in District 3. I want to say a big congratulations to Union Grove High School's volleyball team for their Elite Eight state appearance. Also, congratulations to Ola Middle School's softball team on their county championship. Congratulations also to Ola High School softball team for their Final Four state appearance. And congratulations to the Union Grove Gladiators for winning the Special Needs Flag Football Super Bowl. So amazing. Congratulations to each one of those students and staff members involved in these students being successful. I also want to say congratulations to the Union Grove Cluster. I had the opportunity the other night to attend their community conversation, and was just completely blown away as they welcomed everyone at Union Grove Middle School with their pep band and cheerleaders. I got everyone pumped up as they were coming in. It was a great turnout. There was also, speaking of STEM, the students from Eastlake Elementary School were there demonstrating their robots that they've learned how to code themselves, which was very impressive. I got to talk to a few of our young students who were just showing off their skills with their robots. And then also, we had Timber Ridge Elementary School's chorus who performed for us, and also had artwork on display from Union Grove High School. So it was a really great night, as I said, a wonderful turnout, and just so appreciate the opportunities that our clusters are providing for our families to stay connected to what's going on in our school system. And as it's been mentioned a few times, we're celebrating Kindness Week as we're all wearing our blue, and I just love that because we all know, you turn the TV on and you see just lots of negativity. But I believe firmly that there's more good than bad in this world, and I think the opportunity just to celebrate kindness and just have it be a reminder that each one of us can play a significant role in spreading kindness throughout the world. So I'm encouraging myself and each of you to just take time out to do even a small act of kindness, because it really could go a long way. So thank you for being here. Have a great night.
Thank you, Board Member Cobb. Dr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the time of night where I get to celebrate some new team members joining our leadership team. But before I do, I've got to go back to our October 23rd special call meeting. There were many special appointments as our organization continues to grow with amazing professionals. But I want to recognize, just in case you're here, please stand Laura Watts, the new Assistant Principal for AAS, and Joyce Lynn Jackson, the new Assistant Superintendent for our leadership team. Okay, round of applause. I don't know that they are here, because they are already at work. Already hard at work. But tonight, when the board took action on personnel, they did also make several appointments that add team members to our leadership team. Let me start by congratulating Rashunda Everson, the new Assistant Principal at Mount Carmel Elementary School. Now you stand so we can celebrate you. We are so proud of you and excited for you, and around here, we expect nothing short of immediate impact. So congratulations. I know you're going to just make a great difference. So also tonight, I'm excited to announce for you that the newest cabinet member has been appointed as the Executive Director of Planning and Asset Accountability, and that is Mitch Stevens. Congratulations, Mitch. Stand up and be recognized. Mitch, in case you haven't heard, our community is growing, so we expect nothing short than immediate impact for you. And I know tonight has been all about Birch Creek, and we are so excited to celebrate the topping-off ceremony, to re-engage our community in Phase 2 conversations around attendance lines, to have invested in the furniture for the school to be ready to open by August 2024. But one of the most monumental milestone moments is naming the principal for our newest elementary school, the 29th to come online for Henry County Schools. It's been a long time since we named a new school's new principal, and so it's at this time, I'm so excited to celebrate our newest principal, Quavious Wright, Birch Creek Elementary School.
And we won't make you do a cartwheel.
I was going to say, no cartwheels. This is the cartwheel principal, and I know you'll be turning cartwheels down those beautiful hallways soon, but we, of course, around here, know that there will be nothing short of immediate impact based on your leadership and readiness for this great adventure ahead. So congratulations. Before I turn it over to the chair, I do just have to say that as Thanksgiving approaches, my heart could not be more full of gratitude. Gratitude for just a great start to a school year, an exceptional community of professionals, a great team to do this work with, and really, the best students and young people that we could ever possibly serve. And so I'm just very humbled and thankful as we head into this Thanksgiving season, and hoping that you are surrounded by the things that mean most to you as we head into next week. Madam Chair, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to share a few items or recognitions for District 2 schools. Congratulations to the Woodland High School volleyball team for their state Sweet 16 appearance. Congratulations to Stockbridge High School softball team for their state playoff. Congratulations to seven Henry County Schools for qualifying for state cross-country competition. The schools are Eagles Landings, Locust Grove, Luella, Ola, Stockbridge, Woodland, and Union Grove. Last week, I visited, during STEM Week, I visited Austin Road Elementary School, and I got to see the young people in their STEM class, show me how the robots are actually put together, and they were actually showing me how they were going to use them with just using a gadget, and they were just, the robots were just going around in the area they should have been going in. But it was exciting to see the young people so interested in STEM, because that's the direction we're going now. So that's a good thing. Also, we, along with Chair Harrell, County Chair Harrell, we shared some reading last week at the same school, at Woodland Elementary School. It was a fantastic time that we had reading around the county. I want to say congratulations to Dr. Davis for being one of the superintendent honorees for the Superintendent of the Year. Ms. Pope has already stated it, but I wanted to state it as well. She stole my thunder. Of course, this is Kindness Week. Show kindness to someone this week, and always try and show kindness. I'm just going to piggyback on what Mrs. Cobb said. It's always nice to be kind to somebody. If not everybody, somebody. So show some kindness this week. I also want to wish every one of you a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoy your time with your families, teachers, staff. Enjoy your time off, and have a happy Thanksgiving. If that's it, we've gone down the entire agenda. The meeting is adjourned.